Let's go over, yeah, we're working on it and everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Do you want to start with the memo or the projects?
Um, sorry, memo.
So the top one that has the graph is just a summary of what we've been seeing in permanent numbers since 2010 through this year, 2023. So we had a peak in 2021 of 238, and it fell off a little bit last year, and now we're at a somewhat slower startup pace for this year, about a dozen permits behind what we would have seen as of last year. Our daily office visits, number two, we did start tracking that in March so we could count how many folks came in in any given day. We currently staff it on Wednesdays and Thursdays, and the average we saw was five people a week, and that varied greatly by the season because in June, July, August, we didn't see a lot of people, a lot more people than you would in like the holiday season, but it now we're down to five per week. And I mentioned in paragraph two that if we have times where we aren't visiting with people, then we fill that time with doing permit work, noticing, mailing, invoicing, and all that other stuff that goes with that. So we're filling our time with boundary work. Occasionally, we'll get visitors from the city who accidentally come here thinking they need to get city answers, and we'll let them know that it's, you know, the wrong place, but we'll deduct that time from yours since that's technically city time. And then number three is just a reference to the projects list, which was the next page, the table. And on the table, I listed what we have done and what we're hoping to do, just to have some ideas of what might be ahead for us, and also give you a chance to give us feedback on what we might be thinking about too. The top one on the list is defining what a dwelling is, and that became an issue during our hearing last year over a project in the third part of the county, which you're probably in later with. And out of that came a realization that the current ordinance doesn't define what a dwelling is, and it's really essential to your permitting process to know what it is. And Finding Commission started looking with us at late summer, and we started looking at some examples, but then we got busy with hearings, and so we'll come back to that early, late winter, early spring. Second on the list is one that the chair is involved in with the scheduling for FEMA Region 10. Every so often, it's supposed to be every five years, they come through the area, all the areas that are in the floodplain program, which you are, and they ask to look at our records and look at our ordinances, and then they do a tour of the county. So Suzanne Sarham did that, I think, March of 2022, and scheduled a visit for just the week before Thanksgiving, or the week of Thanksgiving, and the snowstorm's hit, and so we're kind of socked in now anyhow. And so they plan to come back, she plans to come back, and one member of the commission, the Board of Commissioners, is to meet with her and the staff, and they go over our violations, which they listed 35 of those as being a violation. They date all the way back to 17 years ago, so it's a significant amount of time. And when we looked at those lists, we reviewed and found a few of really, we don't believe our violations, but it still left us with maybe 29 or 35 violations that we have to figure out how we're going to solve because of the numbers of years that have already gone by. One thing Ron Jaeger did was add a floodplain development permit process to your permitting. So when a permit comes, you know, we review for floodplain, and then if they need a flood permit, they get that at the same time. So we added that to your system. And so I recently spoke or emailed with Suzanne, and she thinks they'll be back in March, and so we'll need to see if you're still going to be the one to be assigned to that or if you want to assign someone else.
Okay.
And I'll keep up with your office on when they think they'll come back through.
Okay.
The third one down, subdivision procedures. We've been looking at this for a while with both the previous Board of Commissioners and with P and Z. Your process right now has 11 different ways of dividing land, and there's a little bit of confusion about how everybody's read it over the past years. And we were working with the local surveyors and with our P and Z about looking at, trying to reduce the numbers and types.
Simplify it.
Simplify it so that you don't have, for instance, a lot line adjustment that has to go through a hearing. You have a hearing coming up, I won't give specifics because it's a hearing, but you have one coming up where they need to scoot a line, actually two of them, where they had to scoot lines because there was a building in a lot line, and in another case, they wanted to move the road, and they have to go all the way back through a hearing, when you could simplify that and say administratively that can be approved, and then you get to see the final instead of going all the way through hearing. And also will save money because you don't have to go through a publication in the paper and noticing, sending staff out to put a sign on the property. So those would be savings on your end as well as the applicant. So those are just some ideas, reducing the number and types, and then just having it be fairly simplified. So that's a discussion that's underway. If the Board of Commissioners is willing to have us continue that, we would like to keep that work going because I think it's a bad thing to the county. The next one, the last one on that front page, was one that the previous Board of Commissioners talked about with us not having an expiration permit for building or placement permits. And initially, the Board had asked us, Board Commissioners had asked us, to consider adding a one- or a two-year expiration date on those so that they aren't forever permits. And my question to you would be to think about that and see if you still want that work. And I listed that as not necessarily the highest priority. I have a question mark, actually, to wait and see what your feedback might be on that. So that dates back to two years ago when we first talked about this. On the top of the next page, we're working with Innovate to bring our county zoning map fully 100% visual ability for public to look at that. And Debra finished the word last week to have every zone changed you've ever approved beyond that interactive map, and we're hoping that that'll go public here shortly when we get finished with their, the work on the inside of that project. The next one's somewhat of a repeat lot line adjustments, but there are other things too, like two homes on one single property always takes a hearing, and we've talked with P and Z about maybe changing that so that it automatically is allowed with a given number of acres. For instance, if you're in a 10-acre zone and you have 20 acres, you shouldn't have to go through hearing to have two homes.
Just a placement permit.
For a placement permit.
Yeah.
Right now, it takes a conditional use permit, and that's just one that we're thinking might be made easier. Floodplain ordinance, we're going to hear from FEMA on the fact that we have two standing floodplain ordinances. One is in your land use law, and one is a standalone, and some of them cross each other in their descriptions, and some of them are missing some of what are minimum standards. So we'll probably look with them at consolidating that into one. And then the last one on that list is the land use procedure updates, and there are a number of things that need to be adjusted. For instance, the date that we have to post things should match the state of Idaho's laws on that so that they're not different. You have 15 days in one spot and 16 days in another, and they should all match. I didn't put that as the highest priority, but as we work through things, it's easy to pick those sorts of things up. So any questions on the first list of projects? Nope. Under accomplishments, just to run through what we did finish in the last year, as you know, we brought forward an official zoning map for the board to finally adopt. It's now on the wall of your planning and zoning commission or office, the department office, and that's also the one that's being integrated into the interactive map. It included us finding dozens of so-called unzoned lands that were just left to white on your zoning map, and where a label covered some of the zoning. We had to rectify all of those and go through hearing on those, and then that was adopted. The second one down is what we call the effective date map. And over time, so your law says anytime we issue a permit, we have to show that the land is lawfully divided. And over time, there have been many changes to the law and many different interpretations. So we met with the Board of Commissioners and reviewed the status of all those ordinances and the status of the zoning map, and determined that 2017 was the date we can lawfully say that the zoning or the land divisions are effective, and that the zoning map was effective in 2022 with the adoption of the official map. And those were, this was adopted by the board in December and published, and that therefore is going to help us a lot as we review permits because by size and by land division, we only have to go back as far as 2017, whereas before we were going farther back and not necessarily having good laws to rely on for that because we changed a lot in that time period. We also found an error in the code that said that nonperforming lots couldn't be issued permits, and a nonperforming lot means it's too small for the zoning district that it's in, but it was lawfully created. And so we've changed that to say that they are, we being the board and the county has changed that to say that they are lawfully permitted as long as it can meet their setbacks and get their permits. So the last thing on that is we, by doing this, we are speeding up our review times considerably. The next one down is subdivision standards, and we found from Finding Zoning Commission review that there was an ordinance that was missed 2020, 2019, 2020, that went through, completely through the process of updating some subdivision standards. For one instance, it allowed that, your old ordinance used to say that a private road had to meet public road standards. Somehow, that didn't ever get recorded, so we backed up and worked through P and Z and the Board of Commissioners to have that recorded in December of this past year. And so that's now law. The other items that we've done is updated all your application forms, linking back to the Board of Commissioners for review and approval, and we continually update your website. One thing I wanted to point out is I was asked to determine how far we are behind on projects, and we are not behind on anything. Everything that has come through, we've touched in one way or another. Either it's gone through agency review, it's been issued, or it's going through, back to the surveyor for changes. So at this point, we are not behind in our processing. If you look at the colored sheet, the last one that shows all of our application processing, this dates to when we took over in 2020, goes through this year, and we're at somehow 113 total permits. And it does show pounding at 119, but those are ones that are not delayed by review. Those are delayed either because someone abandoned the file or it's going through its final, like, final plaid or final record survey. So those are in a pending state until they actually get recorded, and then we show those as finished. So any questions on any of those three documents?
How, what do you think the timeline is for us to complete what we have pending with projects and stuff?
So those are, these are varied. We are in, with 33 permits of this year, and I just issued number 31 and number 32, I think. So, and the rest are waiting to get to hearing, like you have four coming up in February. Those are still on that pending list because they're coming to hearing. We have three going to P and Z, so those are where the status of some of those are. And final plaid, so there's not all dependent just on us, they're dependent on the surveyor bringing back his survey or a plaid.
Right, what, what I mean, like the subdivision procedures, getting all of these projects? Yeah, what do you think the work timeline?
They're going to be over the coming year.
Okay.
That's why I listed by priority, the most urgent ones would be the ones they take on first at planning commission level, and then over the year, as we have time, we would work on those others.
I see.
So I would say it's a fair year's worth of work.
Okay, okay. I'm going to be very upfront and frank, the fact that I really do want to see a full-time person county employer out here. That's my opinion, these guys have theirs and everything, but I want to get this stuff done and have a nice transition and everything. So that's what, that's what I'm looking at and everything because there's just, there's a lot of feedback and from the public and everything. And also, we are here to serve the public and everything, and same with, you know, and I just, I think that's what we need as a county, but we have to get this stuff done and everything, so Derek, speed up.
I was just wondering, is there a, like a, should we speed up the process? Should we, should we tack some of these to the next P and Z meeting? I'm an engineer speaking, I have a, I have a.
I do not have a timeline. I do not want to rush this. I do not want to screw it up. We need to have qualified person on our staff, and we need backup in case things get behind. So.
Believe me, I want to leave this relationship on good terms if, whenever, you know, if that happens.
Where does that happen?
And if it, and if we don't find anyone qualified, then.
We knew this was temporary, but, you know, temporary, some people's different and others, and I do not want to rush this, that's for sure.
And out of fairness to you, to what we've seen and what we've done, we need two people.
Uh huh, I agree.
And you need to be in the office.
No, no.
It's insulated.
What was that?
Where the heater works.
Or it's insulated.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, in the summer, it was difficult, especially during the pandemic when we had four or five people, and we had to have to wait outside for one-on-one, and if you had two people waiting, there was no room for waiting for anybody, so.
Was that going to be moved once everything, that's going to be locked to look at?
There was nothing talked about there, but then, on the same hand, something you could explore, because I don't know if the ambulance is actually using this side. See, the ambulance.
Yeah, they clean out everything.
No, they clean their stuff out of the bay.
Okay.
They still use this side.
I got you.
But I don't know that on this side is like living quarters.
Take a look at that.
Well, it would be a conversation maybe you have with Jeff.
Right, okay.
Well, one thing I would like to see an expiration date because these open-ended permits are going to bite us.
We see a lot of permits out of a certain water district that come in as sketches, maybe a door, and that's it, and they're trying to get in line for water permits, and they'll list as occupancy date 2025 or something like that. I just think out of fairness that they ought to have an date, but that was one that the previous commissioners had talked about, and I don't know if it's still valid.
No, I totally agree with that, though. They have that.
So I, just to say something here, I echo what they said. Tim has a good idea of trying to expedite this, but do it responsibly, do it the right way. I mean, that's how I feel we need to move forward, but do it right. Smooth transitions, get the right person.
And have that still.
Yes, and we don't want to burn bridges on the way out.
What would be nice is to have, and like I said, I want to be just totally upfront on this, have us, we would hire someone and we would retain one of, yeah, someone from your office in the meantime and everything, and that would, yeah.
We have those working relationships with other cities where we are, Monterey, for example, is, they have an administrator and they have a permit clerk, and their information comes to us when they need, like to do all of their value for reviews, and I do most of their planning, but not all of it. So it kind of is their backup.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's the way I envisioned it. We would go out and then, and then hopefully find a qualified person and then slowly transition that way. I don't see that happening till, I would, I don't know.
Time's going to go by fast.
It is, it is, and the summer.
You know how it is when you have an employee and you get two weeks' notice. You know what happens to your, yeah. So we need to have a backup in case.
Is this list a clear writeout of the projects we're working on? Is that, is that the commissioners?
Yeah.
List, or is there things we left off, or are there things you don't want on the list, or is that?
No, I agree with all of that that's on there, so.
Yeah, we're very much in this streamlining the process so you don't have to have so many meetings.
Yeah, I agree.
And, yeah.
It's expensive and it's time consuming.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah, any hearing we do, you take in your application, you're processing that, but then you're setting up hearings, you're paying your legal notices, which are running about $100, $120 every legal notice we have to do, going out to the site because we have to post it, we have mailings, that of course. This is this month's mailing for easy. So, and those all take time, and they're not all required by state law. State law doesn't actually even require that you have a subdivision hearing. You could actually do it all administratively, but most communities still want it after a certain number of lots, certain size.
We talked about what, one time?
Four.
Four, yeah.
I would, no, I totally agree with that.
Both Dick Staples and Steve Moirak talked to about helping us out because they've had to work with these lots too, and they have some ideas for us as well. We're going to try to get them with the Planning and Zoning Commission a workshop so that we can talk about the best solutions.
Right, right.
I guess if you could, your planning and zoning, maybe if you could pick one of them off the list and every month, get rid of one.
Yeah, we're going to be in good shape in February because one of our meetings got continued into March, so we'll have that meeting with nothing but talking about code.
For Ken? Yeah.
So other things you should have in mind? We did, we track all of our actual hours that we spend, and of course, it depends on who's doing what and what you're going to have, but we had over one year averaged 39.85 hours a week. That's, so that's full time.
How much?
About 39.85.
Forty.
Forty. He's the end of the year.
Different people, but it's still 40 hours.
Forty hours, so I try to do 10 or fewer hours. Jess is doing 28 to 30, just depends on the week and the time of the year. So depending on who and what you hire, you're going to need full time plus that technical backup. Janelle does a lot of our backup invoicing, web hosting, things that if you hire a planner, you're not necessarily going to have that planner doing those, those sorts of things.
How many hours does she usually?
She's only two hours a week, correctly, right now. Sometimes it goes up in the summer, but.
And if you find someone that's a candidate or whatever, we will definitely go and look for them and kind of transition period and continue to act like we are maybe with the city of Monterey where whatever they need help with, they descend our way, and we can provide a, some example.
We thoroughly enjoy working with the planning commission, so if that's going to happen, then you'd say, well, we'll keep you in and out. That's very rewarding work.
I see.
We love to do that.
Very good, yeah. Yeah, we have applicants coming in now for that, so.
Yes.
And everything, so, position. Yeah, well, yeah, that's, yeah, very good. This is, this is what I want to, yeah, have discussion about and everything.
We're red-faced because we're hot, not because we're.
Yes. We start your windows open when we came.
I saw that this morning.
Not a good sign.
And it's not a good sign, yes. Well, now we can open the door up because.
Sure. So you'll be seeing us on February 7th? Yes, for your first hearing of the year.
Fun, fun.
So are you seeing?
What, what are you seeing?
I guess. Are you seeing subdivisions or are you just seeing placement permits?
So the colored chart with the strikes is one out of Get You the Best, who have the types of permits we're seeing, the one that looks like this. Our most frequent permit number is obviously, sorry, the residential permit, which you see 429 over those years. Actually, on this list here, we show total numbers approved, but out of all of those, all of, 700 of them, 429 are residential permits, and then there, there are 27 commercial so between the two of those, 450 are placement permits.
Didn't you have any questions or?
Not this time.
They don't come up very often.
Maybe I can send you an email about a question.
Definitely our phone call or whatever.
How to formulate the questions is the problem at the moment.
Yeah, yes, Linda.
I thought I heard her say that it is now required on private roads to meet county standards?
Other way around. It used to be in the previous code that the law said when you build a private road, you had to meet county standards, and the Board of Commissioners had intended to take that out, went all the way through a hearing process, and somehow it didn't get recorded. Nobody's not, we're not sure why it didn't, but it was the intention of the board to have it be recorded, so that has now been recorded.
I see, okay, all right. Because I'm saying most private roads, I drive as a real estate agent, they are not counting the same thing.
No.
To their standards.
No, not at all, not at all.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
This was huge today, thank you very much. I'm, I'm definitely getting a lot of feedback of wanting to bring planning and zoning back, but I definitely agree this has to be very sensitive, and obviously consultation from Jaeger would be appropriate for longer term. So thank you so much for introducing this topic.
Do you want to do it, yeah, the right way so you don't have to do it again for a current route?
Yes, so thank you, thank you very much.
You know what it was like five years ago, six years ago.
I do.
Yes, we don't want that again.
I understand, that's why you need two people.
You probably need them to continue to keep you guys out of lawsuits, too. Yeah.
Well, thanks for coming in.
I actually do have a question, something I brought up the other day about, do you remember what he said about the airport overlay through the whole county?
Oh, not through the whole county.
Well, it was, I can't remember what he, oh, it was a good time to address it.
Me, how we administer it? Yeah, so the only one we administer is the one the county owns, and that's actually adopted by ordinance. So the county specifically said this is our overlay, so whenever a project lands in there, we have to send it to airport manager, who then advises us whether there are lighting or building height restrictions that have to be placed on the news. So the, most of what we're seeing are commercial developments around the airport.
I wanted to say that he was saying there was other personal counties that were well outside the overlay that was a big part of it.
That was, yeah, that you were looking at and, and having stipulations on that.
Well, it's, it would be the airport board, not us, and the map is publicly available, and it, you remember the LMJ PMP, so it went all the way to the landfill area. It's a pretty big area.
This wasn't even there?
Oh, I don't know of any other. There is no other.
Uh huh, no.
Yeah. In fact, you don't have any regulations for airports that are private. There isn't, you don't have anything.
No.
I want to say one thing, the previous administration hired, hired you because we were in.
You heard me.
We were in a bad way.
Yeah.
We were in a bad way, and we were going down fast, and I appreciate everything you've done for us. And we want you to stay around.
Don't take my side, I'm not playing. That's not how I intended.
Well, if you, I mean, you're obviously a job searching, if you, if you get candidates that you'd like, players sit on your views or players input, we would offer that up. That'd be really, I think the transition, we will work with the other transition to make that happen, but, but her input on, on your candidate may be helpful.
Absolutely.
One thing we didn't mention is Debra from addressing is covering us one day a week.
Yes.
We lost a plane, we lost a job in engineering in Spokane, but we've since hired somebody who's coming in late. But while Debra is there, we've talked about if you don't have any work to do, then, you know, do the addressing or whatever else she has on her list of things to do. And so we, she just sent us what her total hours have been. Last week was eight hours because she was bringing the zoning map up to date. Holiday weeks for like one or two hours apiece, so those are not, they're not all coming to you as planning costs when she's there, because she's doing other things, as we might do if we have hours where we can't fill those, or we have other things we do, and then we dust them from yours. So hers was?
On the 21st, she had two and, uh, two and a quarter hours, then nothing on the 28th, and then 1.75 on the 4th, and then eight on the 11th, and then she is here tomorrow.
And how often do you go through this?
I'm here every Thursday.
Every Thursday?
Yeah, and I was doing it the, I mean, Wednesday and Thursday, but I'm here on the Thursday.
Okay.
And then as we get into construction season, if she needs more of our assistance, we're going to try to figure out with you what you want us to do because there may be more technical questions, planning questions that should be.
See what interest rates do.
Yeah, they quieted some areas, and then others, we are starting to see just a surge, so I'm not really sure. Part of it is supplies are becoming more available and contractors are getting freed up. So those who waited these years. up, so those who waited these years are actually funding contractors.
Right.
Thank you all for meeting.
Yeah, thank you for coming up.